Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Oak Ridge Board of Education. Would you please stand as Wildcat Company Navy Junior ROT presents the colors and then I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
All over. Order. Color, art, hope. Left. Face. College. College.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavy. College. College. Color, art. On.
Next is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. Agel. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Next we move to special reports and presentations. First would be our good news. Before we move into that, obviously, some of the best news is Friday night was a perfect night for graduation. I have been involved in graduation for a number of years and I don't believe I've ever seen as many people that were there with both sides of the stadium full and people standing. So it was an exciting evening for our staff, a rewarding evening, and particularly exciting for our graduates. And to follow up on that, Ms. McLean has informed that graduation celebration was once again a hit. Our thanks to all those people who were involved in making that happen, the merchants who make donations, and just a great thing for our community and our school to have for our students to graduate. So with that said, Dr. Hartman, we'll go to you.
All right. It's my pleasure to share news from Robertsville Middle School. The Robertsville Middle School 6th grade band placed second with a superior rating against other middle school bands at Dollywood's Music in the Parks competition on Saturday, April 29th. RMS 6th grade band competed against 7th and 8th grade bands from Tennessee including Thompson Station, Maryville, Memphis, and Louisville, Kentucky, making them one of the youngest groups to compete in the middle school category with the highest score of the day.
Ms. Webb.
And reporting from Willowbrook Elementary, the following Willowbrook artist had their artwork chosen to represent Willowbrook at the School Administration Building Permanent Collection. Sawyer Thomas from Ms. Addis's 1st grade, Millie Brooms from Ms. Williams kindergarten class, Cora Farmer from Ms. Collins 3rd grade class, and Sayani Jones from Ms. Frill's 4th grade class. A huge shout out to our art teacher, Ms. Cochran, for her work to instill a love of the fine arts in our students.
Ms. McLean.
Okay, I have more news from Willowbrook. It's all about transitions. Our 4th grade students were able to take a field trip to Oak Ridge High School in Robertsville. They were able to visit high school classrooms and see our vertical portrait of a graduate by visiting our CTE classes and seeing firsthand all of the amazing courses that are offered. Additionally, they were able to visit Robertsville to see where they're heading in a few short months. Thanks to Callie Painter, Dr. Holly Cross, Nick Corrigan, Tara Sanford, and Chrissy Best for making this happen. Also, on the transition front, our incoming Willowbrook Bayers from Oak Ridge Preschool visited this past week and they welcomed 40 students and can't wait to see them in the fall. And that's some of the good news from Willowbrook.
Ms. Agel.
From Oak Ridge High School, the Oak Ridge High School World Language Department proudly awarded six seniors the Volunteer State Seal of Biliteracy this year. The Seal of Biliteracy encourages students of all backgrounds to meet college and career-ready benchmarks and to pursue fluency in two languages, preparing them for a global job market that increasingly expects bilingualism and literacy. In addition to demonstrating on-grade level English proficiency, these students demonstrated an intermediate/mid-level proficiency in German and Spanish based on results from the German Language Diploma exam and the Advanced Placement Spanish Language and Culture exam. We're honored to celebrate these students' achievements and their continued dedication to language learning. Congratulations to Terrence Ladd and Jonathan Wolf in German, Kylie Thompson, Vivian Newton, Kevin Gonzalez Melendez, and Sebastian Salasbaca in Spanish. And that is good news.
And again, that's just some of the good news taking place across our school district as we approach the end of school. The good news is there will be things continuing to happen that will be good news from our school throughout the summer. As you've heard us talk before in regard to our selection of the Oak Ridge Schools Volunteer of the Year, which we have done, and that name has been sent on to TSBA. You'll be hearing more about that later. One of the other things that we do through TSBA is to select a student to receive the Oak Ridge Schools Student Recognition Award. Just like the volunteer, this student will go through Tennessee School Board Association, a East Region representative will be selected, and then that East Region person will go on and hopefully become the State Student of the Year. So at this time, I'd like our Vice Chair, Ms. Lauren McLean, Brian Q., and Ms. Beth Eastep to go to the podium.
Do you want to get Brad?
Yes.
Yep, it's your turn to Brad.
I'm all ready. All right, so this is Brian Q. You may know him. His most famous moment this year has been that he developed an app for students to keep track of their coursework, of their class requirements for Oak Ridge. He was awarded a Congressional App Challenge, so that's a national award. So he developed a program called React Native that stays up to date for students to keep up with what classes they need for graduation, credit calculations and all of those things. So it's very exciting for us. It's something that we actually will be able to use, and that's exciting. So another couple of his other achievements, he is a straight A student literally, which is exciting and takes a very difficult course load. He has a 1580 on the SAT, which is... He has served in internships at the National Lab, also at UT as a software engineering intern, and then he attended the Governor's School for the Science and Engineering in summer last year. So he also uses the app to work with TSSAA for bowling scores, so that's another use that's sort of transcended just Oak Ridge, I think, at this point. He's also the state president of Mu Alpha Theta, which is a math fraternity, and then he serves on the Oak Ridge City Youth Advisory Board as a treasurer for that group, and then he's also the president of the ORHS Computer Science Club. So we're honored for him to have this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. And please help me congratulate Brian and wish him the best of luck as he moves on to hopefully state recognition.
Oh, I didn't know I... Yeah, hold on.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you for all you have done and will continue to do because Brian is actually just a junior at Oak Ridge High School, so many more exciting things for him on down the road. And you don't have to stay. You can leave whenever you get ready to. Thank you. Excitement, I'm sure, for our retirees, excitement for them from the board, but also knowing that we are losing quality, dedicated individuals who have done so much for our school district and for their individual schools. My only piece of advice to you is you do not retire. You redirect because there'll be much more on down the road. And the second thing that goes with that, it's important to learn how to say no. Let's keep that in mind. So with that being said, Dr. Borchers, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. All right, we'll go to my script here, and we have 10 certified and five non-certified staff retiring this year. As much as we want to have all of them come here, some have said they weren't going to be able to make it, but we do have eight outstanding retirees that are here tonight that we'll recognize. So when I read your name, if you'll come to the podium where Keys is standing, he'll make a presentation on behalf of the Oak Ridge Schools. So let's get started. We'll start with teachers. Ms. Paula Ferland. Is Paula here? I didn't think I seen her. Okay, we're gonna go past Paula. Michelle Gauthier. Michelle began her teaching career with Oak Ridge Schools in 1992. Michelle spent four years in the 90s splitting her time at Robertsville Middle School teaching band and general music, and 10 years of her 30-year career working as 4th grade strings teacher. During the 2020 pandemic year, Michelle was voted the Teacher of the Year by the Willowbrook staff. She also co-music directed Maskers musicals for five years. Michelle plans to spend more time with family and making music in retirement. Help me thank Ms. Michelle Gauthier. All right, I think I saw Maria Masseffler. Is Maria here? All right, we're not... She did have a new grandbaby just recently, so that may be where she's at at this time. All right, Ms. Inger Scudder. I know Inger's here, yes. Inger began her career with Oak Ridge Schools at Woodland Elementary 33 years ago in August 1990. The major highlight of her career was working with the children. She has students of all ages still come back to visit as they get older to discuss their lives. She plans to rest a little, then come back to substitute, possibly work from home and travel, and "travel" is in caps. On a final note, she had a wonderful ride. There's no other way to have spent the last 33 years. Help me thank Ms. Scudder. And now we're on to support staff. Is David Jones here? There he is. David began his career with Oak Ridge Schools in 1990, working at Oak Ridge High School in maintenance and operations. During his 33 years, he went through two high school renovations and worked as a shift foreman on second shift. David plans to spend more time with grandchildren and add some hobbies to his time. On a final note, David has had a great working career for the Oak Ridge Schools. Help me thank Mr. Jones. All right, next we have Lori Murphy. Is Lori here? There she is. Lori began her career with Oak Ridge Schools in 2011, working at Willowbrook Elementary as a teaching assistant. She was most proud when she was honored with the Outstanding Teaching Assistant Award. Her plans for retirement perhaps are to write a book. The tentative title would be Little Flock, about her years as a home visitor, parent educator with at-risk families. She hopes to put in some volunteer time at the UT Arboretum with the Children's Program and her beloved Farragut Branch Library. She thanks us for the opportunity to work in the Oak Ridge Schools. Help me thank Mrs. Murphy. And next we have Jan Phillips. I know Jan is here. Jan began working for Oak Ridge Schools in October 1988. She spent her 34 years working in various jobs from high school bookkeeper to Willowbrook Elementary as the 21st Century Community Learning Center Director, Secretary Registrar, and Teaching Assistant, to her final destination at Glenwood Elementary, wearing many hats as the secretary and bookkeeper. Her best days were involved with student involvement in special ed classes and reading groups. Jan plans to spend more time with family, which are in Connecticut, Pennsylvania, and Texas, and she hopes to visit all 57 state parks, hike and gardening. Jan would like to thank the Oak Ridge Schools for 34 years of employment. Please help me thank Ms. Phillips. And last but not least, we have Ms. Vicki Rayfield. I know Vicki's here. Vicki began her Oak Ridge Schools career in 1990. During her 28 years, she spent time as teaching assistant in the preschool in Woodland Elementary and 23 years as front office administrative assistant at Woodland. Vicki enjoyed helping the children learn and meeting all the families that went through Woodland Elementary. She felt the staff, parents, and students were her work family, and she was very blessed. Her retirement plans are to spend time and take trips with family and friends. Vicki wants to see Oak Ridge Schools continue to be one of the top schools in the area with all the awesome teachers and administrators. Please help me thank Ms. Rayfield.
I'd like for those, before you leave, you have not been dismissed yet, we'll take those things back from you. Now, in all seriousness, I'd like for those people that were just presented to please stand up right where you are, if you would. Folks, there's a lot of time and dedication that has gone into the lives of our students from those individuals. They have made Oak Ridge Schools better. They have made students realize their dreams, so let's take the opportunity one more time to thank them for that. And then after you get your picture, it's fine to leave. Next item on the agenda is the public forum. Public forum is for anyone who would like to address a topic that is not on the agenda. You may address a topic that is on the agenda when it is presented. If you wish to do so at that time, please raise your hand to be recognized. If you choose to address the board, you will have three minutes to speak. The board may or may not respond to your comments or may have the superintendent address your concerns. When you speak, please come to the podium and sign in and then state your name and address for the board. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board at this time?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to come speak to the board. I'm usually on the other side in Anderson County. Live at 100 Panama Road here in Oak Ridge, longtime native Oak Ridger, worked for the Oak Ridge School system for many years. Went to elementary school here, graduated in 1974. It will be 50 years next year for me, so it's been a long time. But I'm here to talk about something that they have asked me to speak about, these gentlemen here and numerous people. They have bought a sign and they would like to have it erected in the name of Emory Hale as you go into Blankenship Field up on Kentucky Avenue. As you turn in to go to the press box, that road is not named. It is basically a road, it's just an access road. And I would like to talk a little bit about Emory Hale since I knew him pretty well. First of all, I'd like to say that during the time I was there in the 70s, early 70s, Emory Hale meant a lot to a lot of people, not only on the football field, but through the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, getting people basically so interested in football. I was too small to play. I was a manager for the team, but it brings back so many memories as I walk on Blankenship Field since it's been open to the public. I certainly enjoy it. Sometimes I just sit over into the bleachers and reminisce about the time, and it seems like only yesterday that I were there. I have a picture of me standing on the sidelines and I look back to it with fond memories. Emory Hale and all his coaches, assistant coaches, Paul Brewster, and there were so many that meant so much to me, but I'd like to just speak a little bit about some of his accomplishments. As I talked to Coach Hale, he comes to Oak Ridge, and recently I spoke with him. Coach speaks very highly of his players, coaches who helped achieve so much of the success on the gridiron. They went on to win three state championships, 1979, '79, and '80, back-to-back, a win-loss record of 112 and 23. He let me know without us all working together like spokes in a wheel. We could not have lived up to the full potential. We set a goal very, to the very highest. Our goal was always to win a state championship title. We might not have always got that far, but we were always trying to achieve that highest goal. Emory also played many teams on those state championships, and those teams were known for their outstanding execution and ability to beat physically superior teams. Know that Jack Armstrong, Press Box is named after Jack Armstrong, the stadium, and also know that Dr. Blankenship, Blankenship Field, the first superintendent, it's a long history. I think with Emory Hale being about 82 or 83 years old, I know exactly, but I think while he's still living, with his accomplishments and all the people that cared about him during that time, the players, the people of the community, would be such an honor. And I humbly come to you and asked you to erect the sign at Blankenship Field. There'll be no cost of the sign. You have pictures of it. It's already been purchased. If you'd like your maintenance staff to put it in, that'd be fine. If not, we have people that can do that. But if these gentlemen behind me would like to say anything more, or if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you, Don, and certainly numb Coach Hale as well for many, many years. Just to make sure that we're on the same page here for what is needed, the superintendent will need to have from your group in writing, and you've already presented with pictures that has that, in writing exactly what you want to do, why you want to do it, which you've explained to us tonight, why you want to do that, and that needs to come to the superintendent in writing. Once the superintendent gets that, then he will make a recommendation to the board to move forward or whatever he chooses to recommend to us, and then we take that recommendation and go from there. We do not meet again until June something, June what, 19? We meet again June 19th, so I would strongly recommend, because we don't meet at all in July, would strongly recommend that prior to that meeting, so he's got time, don't wait the day before, as soon as possible, get that information to him so he can review it and then make the decision. Is that...
That's correct. I've also talked to the interim city manager, Jack Suggs. You might want to meet with him in between now and that meeting just to make sure he knows how large the sign is, where it's going, and then...
It's not a very big sign, but it's certainly a nice sign that these gentlemen have put together. I will get that letter out to you, Dr. Borchers, and have that drawn up. Like I say, we certainly appreciate, this is just a recommendation to you at this time, and we certainly appreciate listening to what I had to say tonight. Like I say, if there's any other questions you have, feel free to ask.
Thank you, Don, much appreciated.
Thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Hearing no one else, public forum is closed. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Dr. Hartman. Please cast your vote. Consent agenda is approved unanimously. Moving on to items for action, first is the adoption of the FY24 budget. This is a second reading of this document, and if passed on second reading, then the budget is ready to be moved on to the city, would be the next step. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the adoption of the FY24 budget.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers, any additional comments?
You know, we've talked as a group that, we literally did start meeting on this about 11 months ago. We had a meeting in June with my executive directors with the new TESA formula, so been a lot of time and energy and effort put into this budget. Just for our community, if they didn't know, we've talked about this a lot at this meeting in this boardroom. On May 8th, we had a special board meeting where we presented the budget to the board and the city council. May 15th, at 5 o'clock again, we did our line-by-line review and our first reading, and we now are here on May 22nd for the second reading and approval.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Budget is approved unanimously. Item B, FY24 budget transfer number two, this is also a second reading. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY24 budget transfer number two.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Dr. Hartman. Dr. Borchers.
As I mentioned at our last meeting, this is some budget transfer and revisions for general fund and federal grants, also establishes a budget line for the insurance revenue for the damaged cooling towers back in December, and then establishes a budget for a TVA STEM and FY23 system grant.
Hearing none, please cast your vote. Budget transfer number two is approved unanimously. Moving to item C is FY23 budget transfer number three and budget amendment number two. This is a first reading. Dr. Borchers. number three and budget amendment number two. This is a first reading. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of FY-23 budget transfer number three and budget amendment number two.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers?
Just point the Board to the memo. There's a lot of moving parts here. This is to establish a budget for the Oak Ridge Education Foundation Grants, establish a budget for security film for the windows throughout the district, maintenance transfers for purchase of a tri-deck mower, and additional repair budget lines, a budget for the FY-23 Summer Learning Camp and Transportation Grant. This is a one we've talked about going to the city, an addition of $450,792.89 to the budget for the Summer Learning Camp Grant. This will be taken to the city in June, and then the addition of $200,000 to the food service budget to account for increased revenue and additional equipment. That'll also be taken to the city in June. And then just some routine budget transfers and revisions.
Questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Budget transfer number three and budget amendment number two on first reading is passed unanimously. Item D, FY-24 JMS Field Trip to Williamsburg. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of JMS Field Trip to Williamsburg, September 29th through October 2nd, 2023.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers?
As the Board knows, this is a longstanding trip and a lot of great history in our district, and it's for a first-person, interactive learning experience about the British colonies and the Revolutionary War. Scott Lynn has been a big part of this, but Mr. Brewer is here this evening as well, if there's any other questions.
How many years?
This will be 48.
Did you say 48? That's what I thought you said. That's amazing. That's just amazing. Just the number of students' lives that have been impacted by being able to do this, that, and otherwise, some may never have the opportunity to do this. So it's outstanding. Ms. McLean?
I've told this story many times, but I'm going to tell it again. My daughter had the opportunity to go on this trip many years ago, and she came back and announced that she was going to the University of Virginia, because they had toured there in Charlottesville. And I told her, okay, you work hard, and she did go to the University of Virginia and graduated from there. So you are changing lives and making a difference.
Very good. Please cast your vote. The motion is passed unanimously. Item E, Robertsville Middle School TSA National Competition Field Trip. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Robertsville Middle School TSA National Competition Field Trip to Louisville, Kentucky.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers?
Lot of information there from Mr. Corrigan, but just briefly, Robertsville TSA Club attended the state competition in late March and represented Oak Ridge in excellent fashion with 21 project teams comprising of 28 students receiving recognition, and they were, did well enough that they're going to move on to the national conference. And due to this being an overnight trip, school sponsor club out of state, they'll want the approval from the Board tonight.
Comments or questions from the Board? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item F, purchase, purchase of milk coolers for district cafeterias. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the purchase of milk coolers for the district cafeterias.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Dr. Hartman, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers?
We're recommending that the Oak Ridge Schools Board of Education accept the bid from Chef's Deal Restaurant Equipment of Nashville in the amount of $62,292.91 for the purchase of 20 new milk coolers for the district cafeteria. The other coolers are just starting at the end of their life, and this is a good chance, or good time to do this, and this is also coming out of the food service equipment line.
Questions or comments? Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the purchase of replacement food service van. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the purchase of a replacement food service van in the amount of $51,873.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers?
Just wanted to point out in the memo, you can see there, we requested the state to suspend normal bidding procedures for this van, because we went out to bid three times and didn't receive a single bid. So we have gotten three quotes, and we're learning from Allen that these dealerships are wanting to hold on to their new vehicles and sell them for more than what we're getting that vehicle for. So that's why you see that waiver there for the bid process.
Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the purchase of poster printers, poster printer centers for schools. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the purchase of poster printer centers for eight schools not to exceed $40,000, pending final manufacturer discounted pricing.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers?
Many of our teachers and staff have been using these posters machines, and we have some money left in Essor 3.0 for us to put eight of these into our buildings.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is the purchase of 3D scanning equipment. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the bid from Duncan Parnell for 3D scanning equipment in the amount of $80,130.50.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers?
I'm going to read part of this memo, but then I'm going to ask Dr. Cross to explain this. But the purchase of this 3D scanning equipment will include training from Duncan Parnell for middle school students to learn techniques of scanning a scene in multiple settings related to career exploration, and then replicating that scene in their own space for virtual hands-on learning. Until now, this type of training's only been available to college students, and Duncan Parnell is excited to be able to offer this experience to middle school students. So, Dr. Cross, can you just give us a little bit more background on what we're going to receive for our middle schools?
So Bryson Leftwich discovered this, because her husband is a surveyor, and she called me really excited one night. She said, this technology would allow us to do things like recreate a forensic scene with all of the evidence in the room. And she said that when they use these devices, that evidence is like, as good or better as like DNA. Like, it's timestamped, it's date stamped, it's, it's, it's real evidence. So it gives students the opportunity to do something like recreate a forensic environment and study the case. And then I brought this up to Allen, and he was saying, yeah, and you could recreate a space, and for an architect's kind of point of view, and scan the equipment, and replicate models of it, and 3D print them, and there's so many opportunities. I could go on and on and on. But think of a career that you love, how you could replicate it in a 3D space, and then let students experience it.
I think what is certainly the first checkmark is that this has only been available in colleges, and now we're having it in our middle schools. That's pretty incredible. Questions for Dr. Cross or Ms. Agel?
Just a comment. I sure wish we'd had that when I was coaching the forensics team on TSA, because that would have been very cool.
Yeah, when the TSA kids were talking about their project, I said, just wait till you see what you get to do next year.
But it's applicable to many other things. If, probably any of you know that if you go on the internet and you're looking at places to buy furniture, a lot of them will say, we'll plug in the dimensions of your room, and they create a space where you can put the furniture in something designed to look like your room, so that you know how this couch would look in that room. Is it too big, too small, too ugly, whatever? This technology is, if the students know how to use this, opens up a whole lot more career areas.
Ms. McLean?
So is this a printer for both of the middle schools, or just...
So that's, I always like to make everything equal. I like to, both sides of our district to have the same opportunities. So we are having 40,000 at each middle school, and that's why it comes to 80, so that they can have the same experience. And our teachers will all be trained together by Duncan Parnell.
Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, FY-24 classroom fees. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY-24 classroom fees.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers?
Just going to turn to the second page of the attachment, just as a reminder for everybody. State guidance on school fees allows schools to request, but not require fees for activities and materials that impact students during their regular school day or that are part of the curriculum. Any requests for fees must still be approved by the Board of Education. And language already exists in the student handbook informing students and parents that class fees are not a requirement for any student regardless of his or her financial situation.
I was going to call on you anyway.
I said it during the line-by-line budget reading, it's what, $86,000 of our budget is now allocated to pay fees for students whose parents opt not to. That would cover a teacher and a TA. So if you are able, please don't skip on the fees.
Other comments? Amen. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Now, we're going to continue to move along as we look at a number of grants that are either being applied for or forthcoming. The first one is the Summer Learning Camps Grant. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of FY-23 Summer Learning Camps Grant to support June 23 Summer School for Elementary and Middle Schools.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Dr. Hartman, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers?
If you have any questions, I'm going to, Dr. Williams is our guru of summer learning camp, so if you have any questions, she'd be able to answer those.
Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is FY-24 Perkins Basic Grant. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY-24 Perkins Basic Grant.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers?
As it says there in the memo from Dr. Cross, I want you to approve the FY-24 CTE Basic Grant application in the amount of $69,165.73. This is an annual non-competitive grant application, so this is something we approve every school year.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, FY-24 Consolidated Funding Application Grant. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY-24 Consolidated Funding Application Grant.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Dr. Hartman, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers?
Again, something we do annually. Dr. Williams handles most of these things, Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, and IDA-B and IDA preschool.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, FY-24 IDA Partnership for Systematic Change Preschool Grant. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY-24 IDA Partnership for Systemic Change Preschool Grant.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers?
As the memo states, this is an exciting grant. I'm hopeful we'll get this. If funded, this grant would allow Oak Ridge Preschool to have a dedicated, part-time, contracted behavior specialist onsite to help students with behavior needs. This behavior specialist would work with the school team to build individualized behavior plans for students with a high level of fidelity to ensure all students can reach their full potential. This behavior specialist would work solely with the Oak Ridge Preschool in support of all their academic and non-academic goals. So hopeful that this happens.
Comments or questions? Is this, have we applied for this previously, or is this something that's new?
Ms. Downer, is this...
Not that I know of.
Okay.
So this is the first, first time? All right. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a board policy to be approved on first and second reading. It's 6.411 Student Wellness. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 6.411 Student Wellness.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers?
Just a few recommendations recommended by TSBA, and Mr. Lay has worked with Marsha Wade. Second page there, you can see in red, they added, "In-school marketing for food and beverage items must only be for items meeting smart snacks in schools nutrition standards." So we want to be promoting healthy snacks when we're doing those things. Bottom of that page, in addition to, in the section with "commitment to physical activity and physical education," "in addition, withholding physical activity as a form of discipline or punishment is highly discouraged." And then they added, "A commitment to mental health and well-being." And it just says there, "The district is committed to promoting the positive mental health and emotional well-being of all students."
Questions or comments? Ms. McLean?
So this doesn't prevent, like, the PTO from saying, we're going to treat everybody to ice cream, or something like that.
Yes, we'll see if I can speak without coughing. I spoke with Ms. Wade, and we were both in agreement, this does not prevent that. Now, with that said, we don't want to advertise that, so perhaps we won't put on Twitter that the PTO brought ice cream and pizza, but we understand those things happen. That's just a part of life, and we're not going to stop those activities. But once again, we will not be promoting those, perhaps on Twitter and the newsletter, okay?
Hearing none, please cast your vote. Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. And to follow up with student wellness, the next one is a 1.0 addition of school nutrition specialist position. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the addition of a 1.0 school nutrition specialist position.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Dr. Hartman, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers.
As the memo states, this kind of came about because of an analysis completed during the RFP process for our food service management company, discover numerous duties that should be maintained by the district and cannot be required of our food service management company. The additional FTE will provide the needed staff to complete the duties required by USDA and the Office of School Nutrition. And you can see there, this proposal, or this position as proposed would begin on July 1, and it would be paid by the School Nutrition Fund and would not impact the general fund budget.
Comments or questions?
Well, just a brief comment. The federal government has made a lot of rules about what we can feed students. I read somewhere in the news just the other day that they're going to ban chocolate milk from schools. So it appears that the feds want to make food in the cafeterias as unappealing as possible to small children, because there are some kids who won't drink milk unless it's chocolate, and they got to get their calcium somewhere. I hope the nutrition specialists can work on ways to make the food more appealing to more students.
Yeah, we had a meeting with SFE just a week, was that a week ago, two weeks ago? And I know they talked a lot about talking with students and families and trying to meet the needs, and I was, I left there very optimistic.
Any other questions? Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, FY24 Oak Ridge School Student Discipline Code of Conduct. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of FY24 Oak Ridge School Student Discipline Code of Conduct.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Dr. Hartman, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers.
I'm going to turn to Mr. Lay if there's any questions you have of him. I don't want to make him talk too much, but if you have some specific questions, Mr. Lay can answer those.
Ms. Webb.
Sorry, you'll have to speak a little. On page 34, it says, "A student whose presence creates an unreasonable safety concern." What would be an example of that?
You know, we were very careful not to be really specific on that. We've had some situations this year to where, you know, typically what we would do is all students suspended expelled would have access to Secret City Academy, and we've sent those, we've just had some situations this year. We don't, we didn't feel comfortable or confident that we could say that child was not, or that student was not a risk to our other students or our staff members. Now, once again, we won't have a lot of those situations, but some of those involved weapons, things such as that. And, you know, and once again, we couldn't say with confidence, "Is that child going to not be armed if they get on a bus?" Things such as that. So in those situations, we will offer basically a virtual program. You know, and our intent will always be to get them back to the program, but not until we feel confident that they're not putting our other students and our staff at risk.
Other questions? Motion is approval of the Oak Ridge School Student Discipline Code of Conduct. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to items for information, enrollment and attendance reports. And I know some of you have been sitting on pins and needles, waiting for this to get here. So tonight, we're going to present the trophy for the school that has the best student attendance for the eighth reporting period, and the staff attendance for the eighth attendance reporting period. So we'll first start with student attendance. Thank you, perfect. Do we have somebody here that would like to come forward and represent Woodland Elementary School? Mr. Hobby. Woodland Elementary had the best student attendance for the eighth attendance reporting period with a 3.7 student absentee rate. We actually had three schools post-excellent student attendance. Linden and JMS are deserving of an honorable mention as well. Congratulations, Woodland, and congratulations to Linden and Jefferson. Thank you. Now could I have somebody from Oak Ridge High School? Ms. Estep, please come forward for the staff attendance. Oak Ridge High School had the best staff attendance for our eighth attendance reporting period. RMS and our Maintenance and Operations Department are deserving of an honorable mention as well. Congratulations to Oak Ridge High School's staff, and also congratulations to our Maintenance and Operations and Robertsville. And thank everyone for making a concentrated effort to get people in school, both staff members and students. Can't learn if you're not there. Any brief comments, Mr. Lay?
Yes, sir. Basically, our attendance at this time, our enrollment, in comparison to at the end of the school year, the 22, 23 school year, we have increased by ninety-nine students. If you've been keeping numbers, you may not come up that figure, but I added the twenty-four early graduates back, where we had a real number. So we're up ninety-nine. I wished every attendance period looked like this one. We actually had a really good month, so I'm pleased.
Great, and thank you as well for all that you do in this area to emphasize this importance. And maybe this is a sign that as we move on, things will continue to improve, and we'll have more battles over receiving these outstanding trophies that I hope will be on display when the board, where the board comes by, so we want to see it.
I will share that the two principals who brought the trophies back tonight, that received them at the last board meeting, they were pretty confident they were going back with them. So once again, we'll see what happens.
A little overconfident sometimes. I'm not, Ms. Van Dyck, I'm not even going to ask you for a financial report. We've had enough of financial stuff for a little while, have we not? But again, yes, it does. Thank you. Also, you have the FY24 Board of Education Meeting Calendar. Dr. Borchers, any comments you want to make about that, or?
No, it's our typical calendar. I don't think we've had any other changes from our typical year. So pretty much status quo.
So we, there's always a possibility that a change could occur, but for the most part, we've pretty much stayed with that schedule and been on schedule like that. Items for discussion, the old business or new business, communications. Only reminder is, as you already heard, our next board meeting will be June 19. For those who are still marking days off the calendar, it won't be long. Hope for a great finish. I know it's been an exciting year. A lot of great things have occurred, and a lot of things yet to be completed. A lot of excitement, and some time for relax, some time for rest and relaxation before we get started. But maybe we don't ever stop. We're ongoing. That's the mark of a great school district. A little time for relaxation, but then back at it as well. Dr. Borchers, any?
As you stated, next Thursday, June 1 is our students' last day, and Friday, June 2 is our teachers' last day, so it is wrapping up quickly.
Any comments from the board? Again, thank each of y'all for taking the time to be here in person with us. I actually ran into a person, again, that said they watch the school board meetings regularly. So there's more, there's million, I say a million, there must be millions of people doing this, because this person said they watch every time we're on. And she did say she had some times it was hard to hear what we're saying, so I told her we'd talk a little bit louder, and we were getting new speakers, so that it would be better. So Scott and Dave, thank you all back there for keeping us on the air. Lynn, thank you for keeping us in line. And thank everyone again. We are adjourned.